We were gone. I can't help it.
Okay, I would like to call the village board meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, to order roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Melchewski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
During the meeting of the village board, the village of Ashwabanan will convene into closed session pursuant to, A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E, number one, for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating specified public business regarding the public safety officer grievance where competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session; two, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of parcel VA-56-4-1 related to tax incremental district number five, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session; under B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to the public safety officer grievance. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985 sub 2 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please always remember the men and women that we have throughout the world. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. If none, I will need action.
Move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, action on the minutes.
Move to approve the September 26 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 26th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the board's special meeting minutes of October 6th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 6th, the closed session minutes from September 26th, and see, A, 0926C, closed session minutes as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Any comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Any comments from the public for items not on tonight's agenda? Any comments from the public, items not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're going to move on, but I would like to welcome our scout troops that are working tonight on two different badges. Welcome to the village board. Okay, number eight, any written communications? I have none.
None received, Madam President.
Okay, number nine, action on the consent agenda. A is October operator license and B is department reports for October.
Move to approve.
Second.
Both, both. Yeah, move to approve both.
We have a motion and a second to approve both those consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number 10, action items. This is a public hearing on a final request from Timothy Wallas with Ingberg Anderson Architects, agent for Case Wawarka with United Construction Realty, to establish a planned unit development overlay zoning ordinance located at 791 Morris Avenue, parcel VA 67-A-2. Okay, this is a public hearing? Yes, Aaron. We'll hear from Aaron.
Okay. This is the final PUD hearing for the United Development Project, corner of Morris and Holmgren. Very little has changed since the preliminary PUD, which is brought before you last month.
Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for this agenda item? Anybody like to speak for this agenda item? Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak against this agenda item? Anybody wanting to speak against this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. 10B, action on ordinance number 10-1-17, establishing a zoning for certain land located at 791 Morris Avenue as a planned unit development district for United Development. Anybody? This is, this is the ordinance creating their PUD. Any questions for Aaron or Todd or?
I think we've heard it a few times, so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 10-1-17.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 10-1-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Do they plan on starting pretty soon, do you know?
I believe.
Does it fall yet?
Hopefully the weather will hold up. Okay.
And we're in Wisconsin, so that means spring, I suppose.
It'll be nice till February, if that's what that means.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 10C, action on resolution 10-1-17, creating premier economic development district. Okay?
I can address this. Basically, what this is, a formal action for the village board to take. As you may recall, the state legislature passed some legislation about a year and a half ago allowing the village to create what's called a premier economic development district, which would allow the village to issue two additional Class B combination liquor license in his designated area. The resolution specifically designates that premier economic development district, consistent with the statutory requirements. And again, the resolution is simply a formal action creating that, which is then related to agenda item 10F later on for tonight's meeting.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 10-1-17. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10D, action on a Class A beer/Class A liquor license for Beachwood Green Bay Hotel LLC, DBA Home Two Suite. Pat?
As noted, Home Two Suites will soon be opening at 810 Morris Avenue. It's a new four-story, 94-room facility, and they're hoping to offer beer and wine at its corner market store located near the reservation desk. This item was denied at Public Works on a 3-2 vote, and there are members of Home Two Suites here. If you have any questions for them.
Madam President, I'm going to abstain from any discussion or vote on this.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve the request for the Class A beer/Class A liquor license.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class A beer/Class A liquor license.
I just want to thank them for, this is, picture's worth a thousand words. I'm glad they, I'm glad they did it, and I think it's not a threat to our local economy here, so I, and every other hotel I've ever been in does it, so I think it's okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class A beer/Class A liquor license.
Mary. Okay, you're gonna have a discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion before we vote.
At committee level, I voted against this, not because I, I don't think that the Home Two Suites or Home Two is gonna not, or they can't do it, or whatever. It's just because of the amount of liquor licenses that we have in Ashwabanan, and what are we gonna, you know, we're gonna run out of these things if all the motels jump on the bandwagon and do it. I don't have anything against these people, and I talked with them earlier this week, and it's only about potential for other development with the liquor licenses. We're gonna run out of them, and if everybody does it, then that's my only reservation on, against this. It's only.
What's our, what is our situation?
Our municipal code allows eight Class A liquor, and this would be number five.
So. And of the size of what they're doing, I wish they would've had a complete bar. I mean, that would've been easier for me to vote for, to have a big money-making store, but when you have a shelf on a cooler, taking up one liquor license, that doesn't make sense. I mean, I wish we didn't have to vote in favor of this or not, because it does not, it does not, in my opinion, warrant what economic development can happen with other liquor licenses if we give them to them. So that's why, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna vote against it right now just because of that.
What, what do, I mean, only five? We've got all these restaurants and other.
These are Class A.
These are Class A. This is retail sales.
Actually, it'd be sixth, the sixth.
So that's more or less for liquor stores, then?
Correct.
And we have six out of eight used now.
This would be number six. Though I'm not part of the legislative body, I can't say that eight could be amended in the future if need be.
But if this is passed, it'll be six out of eight used up.
Correct.
But to clarify what Pat's saying is, it's our own limitation setting that number of eight. This is not like the Class B licenses that are.
There's a quota system.
Pro-rata or quota system.
Yeah.
Set by the state. This is the village of Ashwabanan's own ordinance implementing its own, own limit to that.
Wouldn't that come into effect now?
Years ago.
Because I didn't remember that.
Years ago.
Before me. It's not required by the state level to say how many there are.
Why do we have them, then? I mean, why do we even have a limit then? Why do we set that number?
That, I think that was set, Mark, probably long before any of us even got here.
Correct.
And you're more than welcome to recommend that we re-study it and change it. It's just that it's never come up.
Allison, that's something we can change when we hit the magic number of eight.
You could do it then, too.
All right, let's move on.
Wish that would've been told to us, I guess, because I didn't know that at all.
Home Two Suites people are here? Somebody say?
Yes.
You see that, you see what we're running up against? Okay, you understand that. Yeah, okay. You raise a good point, Mark. I mean, there's no guarantee that the next village board would agree to increase it, but the option is there.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
One opposed.
Just because of principle.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Mark.
And one abstain. Okay, motion passes. Okay, 10E, action to amend license premise description, Grand Central LLC, DBA Famous Daves.
Real simple, they want to add, when they came before the board to, for their liquor license, they omitted the placement of a patio on their original plan, and they would like to add said patio to their premise description.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended license premise description for Grand Central LLC, DBA Famous Daves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on a Class B beer/Class B liquor license, PEDD, for Titletown Sports Service, Inc., DBA Titletown. Pat?
As alluded to, from the village attorney, for the PEDD area, we have, by state law, two Class B combos, and Titletown Sports Service, Inc., doing business as Titletown, has applied for the, if you will, the sledding hill. On the first floor is the 46 Below Bistro. The second floor would be the Rockwood Terrace, which is a private event space, and the third floor, which is basically, as I've been told, more of a special event area, called Belly-Up Bar, which is on the top side. So before you is a diagram of the premise, which includes the Titletown Plaza, excluding the children's play area, the agility zone, and the 40-yard dash location.
Patrick, did I hear you right, saying third floor?
On the very top, where the sledding, there's a, there's a little, as they call it, the belly up to the bar area. There are representatives of the Packers here. If you have any questions for them as well.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, could we open the floor?
Move to open the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is open.
My question is, I thought that there was some special state legislation that was being introduced, so that you didn't have to use one of these. Is that gone away, or is that coming? And then would you relinquish this license, or how is, how is that gonna work, I guess?
Good evening.
Could you state your name and address, please, Aaron?
Aaron Popke. Home address, work address, pardon me.
Business is fine.
Business is fine.
Business. 1265 Lombardi Avenue, pardon me. So the question was, the state legislation, that, if I'm not mistaken, your question was about the liquor license?
Right.
Which is specific to the district, which is, I believe, what one of these is.
Correct.
Yeah.
That element wouldn't go away.
Correct.
But I thought that.
So I'm sorry, I restate your question.
I thought that the state was trying to, to make a license specific for, like, the entertainment district for the Packers or the Titletown district, and something similar for that for the Bucks down in Milwaukee. Now, is that, is that coming, or is that going, or is that gonna happen, or?
Well, it's still being pursued. The, and that is to describe the area in which the establishment is.
Right.
Located. So a way that, from a state level, would, would apply to that, but if I'm not mistaken, we still need to apply for a liquor license for the establishment.
So that would be another exemption that they would be creating for us, for you, or for, I mean, for the area, I guess? I mean, I don't want to.
Correct the.
I'm not afraid of giving a liquor license, but if they do create that zoning, are we gonna be able to utilize that if that has a liquor license attached to it, give you this, that one instead of this one?
The liquor license, that does not have a liquor license. It's more about how the liquor license can be used. I don't know if that's the best way to describe it.
Correct.
But no, it was, the license is separate from the effort that we're pursuing at the state level, too. That's more about how the area can be designated and how the license can be used within that area.
Okay.
So we still need a license, and this one is specific to the district, as opposed to a one that's outside, a norm, I don't know if "normal" is the right word, but a normal liquor license, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As I understand, as we, the state legislation said two extra, right?
Correct.
Does either Kohler Plaza or Hinterland use one of those?
No.
They don't?
No.
So this is the first of two possibles?
Yes.
What's the difference between this and Hinterland or, or the?
Hinterland has a brewery permit, which is separate from anything that we do.
A brewery permit. What about Hinter, what about?
They have an exception to the quota Class B.
Because of the restaurant?
Correct.
Okay.
Does this allow for consumption in the outside areas?
Yes, as noted in your packet.
Yes.
I can answer that, too. I didn't know if that was to me or the tech, technical language of the law.
In your packet, trustee Zerbal, the premise includes the entire Titletown Plaza, excluding the children's play area, the agility zone, and the 40-yard dash location.
But it does allow the skating rink area, the sledding hill area, things like that?
Yes, and they're also looking at, for special events on the playfield. Only special events.
Do they have to come in front of us for those?
No. What I put before you, that description, that entails what's on their application.
They would still have to come back to, essentially, village staff. They would submit a special events permit specifically for that, so there would still be an approval process. But essentially, they're trying to outline that it's, you know, we know that Packer game days are going to be there, and those are kind of dealt with in a separate process, if you will. But if they were to do a concert, for example, they would have to come through a special event process, but then that area would be approved for usage of alcohol in the, in that special events context. Overall, we're generally treating this area, because it's, it's all owned by that same entity, the plaza is, that this would be equivalent to a patio to everybody else, and maybe get, circling back to Mark's comments about the amendment in the state law, that really goes into the, the carrying of open intoxicants across licensed premises, and they would, really cannot do that in this case. That's why they're trying to open it up and treat it more as one consistent patio, so that somebody can watch somebody ice skating. I don't think they are going to encourage or allow, for their own purposes, that in the winter, but during the summer, that area is open. It's got tables and chairs there where people could sit and have a drink while they watch their kids play ping pong or something else off to the side.
I still, we've had this discussion before, and have just not a good feeling about that. Personally, I've got nothing against it. I'd probably do it when my kids are younger. But I think there are plenty of families out there that come to this area, and it's a beautiful area, but they don't necessarily want to see people standing around with beer and wine while they're with their families. It's, and, and, you know, that's, that's their, that's their feelings. I've got no problem with that, well, but I just, I just don't have a, I don't have an easy feeling about that part of it, about this thing.
No, understood your.
How is, how are you gonna police this, Aaron? You know, you're singling out the children's area, which is a good step. I'm not saying nothing against it, but how are you gonna police this?
We have staff that are there, patrolling and monitoring the grounds, and we do have the area blocked off, intent with not to have, not to have the intoxicants in the playground area or in the field areas, as we described earlier, to your concern as well. But we have staff there now, and ever since we opened, been developing, you know, precise rotation and precise walk-through the areas, having a now, a good feel for it since it's been opened.
Well, my, my wife and I did walk through there on a nice day, and I was very impressed with it, but I kind of like the idea of the family affair. I don't know if alcohol is necessary for that. There's plenty of areas around the area there. If you do care to have a beer, and they all have a patio that you can sit outside and view the area. So I've got a few mixed feelings on it.
Well, the intent would be to monitor and make sure there is no activity that would be outside of what we would prefer as well. I mean, to be very proactive in handling those activities.
To me, to me, it's not, I really don't think there you're gonna have a lot of issues with people as far as overindulging, things like that. To me, that's not the thing. To me, it's the people, a certain amount of people are gonna come with their families that don't want, just don't need to see that. And there's plenty of, Gary just said, there's plenty of areas, short walk to be able to go grab a sandwich with your kids and your family, go have a glass of wine or a beer over there, very short walk. I just don't see, and most of it I see in yellow here, 90% of it's open to.
Right.
Open intoxicants. Very little is of, is, is designed not to have any.
What, if, if you look at this, you know, what you, you've got up there, the yellow part is the one that would have the ability to have the open intoxicants. The green would be for spent, special events only. The way I view this is that, you know, you're, you go to Lodge Kohler for the weekend, and your kids want to go tubing down the hill, and mom and dad want to sit outside in a, a nice chair and have a glass of wine. That's how I view this. Didn't you also say, Aaron, that there would be security cameras?
No, those are present as well.
Right.
So a combination of staff, as well as actively monitored.
Yeah.
Our discussions have also been that there would be plastic cups that they're, you know, not, we wanted to know from our own staffing perspective that it wasn't somebody else carrying in the case of beer, Miller Lite from the parking lot into there. And so we've suggested that they have to have plastic cups, if you will, a Titletown cup, and to avoid the glass concerns that we have. We don't want the aluminum, all that stuff. So in terms of trying to display that everybody's walking around, I don't know that they would use a different cup, or it's, you know, whether it's soda or beer in it. It's not like everybody's walking around with a can of Miller Lite in their hand and.
Right.
Well, I, I, the only thing that bothers me is game day. You've got people all over this village drinking, and.
Well, game, this doesn't really have anything to do with game day.
I know it doesn't. I know it doesn't, but, you know, I, I just can't perceive not having a problem in there.
Game day is wide open, not only in this area, but all the blocks are open to open intoxicants, which would include the cans of Miller Lite and everything else.
I realize that.
Well, you, both of you raised, raised good points, but I, my feeling is, we've got to give it a shot, and I think the organization in charge here is super aware of these issues, and hopefully, hopefully they are, and I'm sure they are. And we'll keep an eye on it, and if things go bad, as some of you, maybe they will be, but I hope not, but if they do go bad, we'll have to take another look at it. But with the investment that's made there, and all the things that go on already, Gary, you're right, on game day, I, I just, I'm okay with it.
Well, Ken, like I said before, to me, it's nothing to.
Right.
It has nothing to do with, with, with things go bad, and I, I'm sure it's gonna be a safe.
Right.
Environment, even if this passed. It's just the families that, it's a family area, and the families that are gonna be coming there, there's gonna be a lot of them that really don't care to see it.
Right.
And there's plenty of opportunities right close by for the people that want to have a beer and a drink.
Yep.
To be able to go easily, a minute walk away.
In the event we do prove this, approve this, and it does not go right, do we have the right to remove that permit, then?
You do. You would have to go through a hearing process in which to basically revoke or take that away.
I was thinking of a yearly permit, more so than to go through the legal steps. Do they have to apply for it every year like they do?
Every, every May, when I bring all the liquor licenses for Reynolds to you.
Tavern down the street. Okay, okay.
But even so, even, once it's granted, we can't just at the end of the first year say no, right? I mean, you got to go through that process of.
Well, if the chief got an astronomical amount of issues.
Still requires a hearing.
Did that have to be a hearing?
Chief, can you handle that?
Hundred percent. Every option has to be a hearing.
Right.
It changes the burdens of proof and whatnot, but they will need, if you revoke it, it will need a hearing.
Well, I would think the last thing that the Packers organization would want is, is bad publicity. I mean, they, they don't need that any more than the man in the moon, so I suspect they're gonna keep a, a good eye on it. But Chris, you're, you know, you're raising a good point, yeah. Maybe there's people, maybe a lot of people who don't want to see that, but I'm gonna give them a chance. Make an ocean return to regular order of business.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Aaron.
I'll move to approve the request for the Class B beer/Class B liquor license, PEDD, for Titletown Service, Sports Service, Inc., doing business as Titletown, as requested in item 10F.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the Class B beer/Class B liquor license for PED for Titletown Sports Service, Inc., DBA Titletown. All those, and any more discussion?
Well, I'll be in favor of this, under the understanding that it does work out good, but I'm having a tough time doing that. I know the Packers are on a good organization, and I'm going under that premise.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nope.
One no. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. 10G, action on ordinance 10-4-17, amending section 6-13-22 regarding operation of short-term rentals.
Okay, these are the ordinance changes as a follow-up from our last meeting, the special meeting concerning the additional amendments to the short-term rental licensing ordinance. As requested by the board, those two additional provisions have been added in with respect to the condition for owner occupancy, as well as the requirement that the operator, owner, operator, property manager maintain written documentation concerning who's renting, how long, and what the amount is. So those two provisions are before you in this amended ordinance.
Okay. I have a question, Tony. I thought that we were not going to do the owner occupied because it was going to be challenged.
That, that is, well, what I did is I put together language in the event that the board still wanted to do that. I think after the discussion that we had at the last. board still wanted to do that. I think after the discussion that we had at the last meeting, I wanted to at least present that as an option. I thought that was the, at least, request or direction of the board. So I added that in and it would be my recommendation not to add that provision based upon the considerations that I talked about last time as far as different, differentiating between classes of property owners as well as the fact that the state has specifically legislated in this area and taken away our ability to prohibit people from doing this. So...
I just, I think several of us wanted to see it in writing, Mary. I know Mark did and I did as well. So I think that's why Tony put it in.
I spoke with the mayor of Bayfield at the League Municipality Conference last week. They are putting that language in theirs and we talked about who's the first to be approached by the state to change it. So we're not the only ones with that language.
Well, before, I'd like to know, what did we do, what are we doing with the six days and under? Are we limiting that to that, to the ones we had originally?
Six days and under, you adopted an ordinance last, last meeting to prohibit that. The ones that have the conditional use permit previously would be grandfathered for those that were actively using their conditional use permit, which is only Todd left.
A few.
Four.
Four.
Okay. All right. So the six days and under one's pretty well taken care of. Then we got a handle on it.
Six days and under is done.
All right.
Ten or more nights total are under the license.
Okay. Okay. Well, just leaving the owner occupied aside for a moment. Down in the paragraph 17 says each short-term rental shall maintain the following written records. I would like to see requirement that that information is more than maintained. I'd like to see that as part of their form that they have to fill out. I mean, if they maintained it, how are we ever going to see it? That word maintain just struck me as, as not giving us the information that, that we want to see with, with every rental. So...
I don't think we want to see, Ken, I don't know if we want to see it on every rental.
I do. I do.
Yeah, but we don't require a motel to...
I don't care. I want to see it on the short-term rentals here.
Who's going to place it?
Yeah.
Well, if they have to fill out a form, what's, what's the difference? They have to fill out a form with that information. So what, what's the difference? And motels wouldn't be, wouldn't be governed by this. I mean, if they were, I could see a, an issue, but...
I think that's the only, it's the only thing, I guess, I mean, I don't want to over-regulate something because it's not governed.
Well, you're the one that owner occupied.
You are the one that...
Yeah.
But you're asking more, more...
Absolutely. Absolutely. This is going to be a disaster. This is going to be a disaster in this community. I've said it before and you watch and see, it's going to be a disaster. And the more we can do to contain it, I'm all in favor of it. It is going to be over, over time. People from out of this area are buying these homes, they don't live here, and they're going to rent these things out all over this community. If that's not a disaster, I don't know what is. So requiring it to be, to be filed, I don't think is a, is a burden whatsoever. People are making all kinds of money from what I hear, anyway, and what, what the prices are on, on, on the various websites. So I don't have a problem with requiring this information to be filed.
I have a question, Tony. If, if we adopt this language with the owner occupied, what happens to the ones that have already applied for the permit? Because there's, there's many of them that have, that are not owner occupied. So what do we do with them?
Yeah. I think what we would do is basically if you were to pass that, anyone who has applied, which I don't think anyone has applied at this point.
Not yet.
So that would be in effect going forward. So it would be applied to any applicant that submits it from this point forward, once it's passed.
This is a little different because it's a licensing ordinance as opposed to a zoning ordinance, but I think we still have the same concerns because similar to the sex offender ordinances that are going under criticism and being overturned all over the state, it's because even though you try to push it into something that's not a zoning ordinance, it effectively results in that, that change or that same impact. And that's why those are being overturned. So that's why we share that concern, but you wouldn't necessarily have the same grandfathering impact that you would generally see under a conditional use permit zoning regulation, I think, if Tony would agree.
I would agree.
But we still recommend not having that in.
So where do you want to put that, or what do you want to do? Each short-term rental shall maintain the following written records for each rental of the dwelling unit, full name and current address of any person renting the property, the time period for that rental, and the monetary amount for consideration paid for that rental.
Right.
So every year they turn in the previous year? Is that what you want to see, Ken? I guess, I mean, I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I would, I was just looking at the language. I would, I would like it to read, just tossing it out, each short-term rental shall provide the following written records for each rental of the dwelling unit to the village.
When?
Well, good question.
Well, if this is going to be run by complaint, as we've been talking about, at least that would give us the records we need on who the violators were.
Right.
So I can understand you wanting the records, Ken, but you know, they're there for us if we need them to catch a violator of whatever it might be.
And if they don't have them, then they're violating...
Then you're violating this.
Yeah.
Well, I just don't, I don't think requiring them to be maintained is enough, not for me, anyway. I understand. Not for me. I'm going to make a motion to amend this. Let's take this one at a time. I'm going to make a motion to amend paragraph 17. So it reads as follows. Each short-term rental shall provide, eliminate the word maintain, the following written records for each rental of the dwelling unit shall provide to the village. I'm sorry. I should, I have it in the wrong place. Each short-term rental shall provide to the village the following written records for each rental of the dwelling unit on a monthly basis. And the rest of it can stay the same. So I'm going to make that motion to amend paragraph 17 to read that language.
So you're asking to turn it in on a monthly basis, am I right?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know who's going to do it. I mean, we, I mean, who's going to...
We, we need a second before we can discuss it.
No, I don't, I, I can understand what you want, Ken, but to turn it in is a question.
We need, we need a second.
No second.
Okay, no second.
We have no second. Motion fails.
All right. All right. It's fine. We take it one at a time.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion.
Uh-oh.
I'm going to make a motion that we eliminate the owner occupied because we have been advised by our legal counsel not to put it in there. Let Bayfield be the first one to challenge it.
Even though I want to see it in there, Mary, I'm going to second that.
Mike, if the state comes back, then is that omitted? Does this have to be wrote with your discussion up there?
If it gets omitted?
If the state omits it.
I don't care what the state says. It's going to take litigation as far as I'm concerned.
Right. It's going to take litigation. So that's legal, legal power and legal fees and...
Keep it out, not...
I, I, we have legal counsel that has told us not to put it in. So I would not put it in. So I made a motion, Mark seconded the motion, to take that language out.
Okay.
I go back and forth on this all the time. And when I came into the meeting tonight, I thought if I could hear that there's other communities or municipalities kind of doing the same thing. And Mike, you brought it up about Bayfield. I know it's only one other, but maybe there's more.
I request a roll call vote on this issue, please.
Okay.
Call a question?
Call the question.
Trustee Allison Williams?
No. Er, I'm sorry. This is to take the, the owner occupied language out.
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
No.
Trustee Zerbal?
No.
Trustee Mark Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski?
No.
Trustee Melchewski?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
And your motion passes four to three.
Okay. Now, Ken, number 17.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as amended in entirety right now. Rest of it. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 10-4-17 as presented.
Well, with the amendment to take out the short, owner occupancy business, right?
A coming out.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Allison Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski?
No.
Trustee Melchewski?
Yes.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
And that passes six to one.
Okay. Moving on, presentation of Bike and Ped Committee Priority Projects. Randy, Rex, Randy, both of you.
The Bike and Ped Committee is working on the revision of their Bicycle and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan for the Village. As such, one of the big discussion points, the last several meetings, was a reprioritization of the different projects that we have, especially with the new Titletown District coming into effect. So Randy Johnson, who is one of our citizen members, would like to present and answer any questions anybody may have on some of the top priority projects that they've come up with. Randy?
Thank you, Randy Johnson, 2906 Thunderbird Trail. Thanks for taking a few minutes tonight to hear our committee's work. We started our comprehensive plan just briefly, started the committee in 2003, and we did our first plan in 2000 and started it in seven, finished it about early nine, did a partial update in about 13. We came to the board and talked to you then about it. And now we're in another update process and hopefully have that finalized at the beginning of next year. We're going to be holding some community discussions about it because things are changing. We are accomplishing things in the village. I thank you guys for your, for, I always use guys, Mary, as a general term. So I got that from my wife.
Allison, too.
I know. I thank you for your support because we've made some great strides in the community. As you drive around, you can see a lot more areas where people are walking and bicycling in a safe area. And more and more people are out there doing it on a regular basis. So we appreciate that. What we decided to do is to send you, and it was in your packet, a priority list. If you go to the plan, we've got pages where it says projects within two years, projects within five years, 10 years. I think we go out even 20 years. Those are our wishful ones. But we decided to, was kind of requested to maybe put together about our 10 top projects. So at our last couple of meetings, we talked about them. And I'd just like to summarize them a little. As Rex said, the, the first one on the list is Morris Avenue. You just heard about the new hotel, which you approved and stuff. There isn't a sidewalk on that side of Morris. So it's in our plan as work is done on Morris. There should be a sidewalk. I hate to have people come to the community, they walk out of the front door of their hotel and there's, you got to walk in the street to get to someplace to eat and such. So we've got Morris Avenue between Oneida and Holmgren is, is one of our priority items. The next four items deal with the Titletown District. And as you can see right now, they're, they're putting in the roads coming from Shady or the side trails coming from Shady underneath the highway, in front of Cabela's, down through Argon Park, back up around Morris, up to Hilltop, which is a nice addition at that end. We have in our plan then four areas on Ori on both sides, from the district down to Cormier, Marley and Ridge Road on the east side, bringing it down. There is one on the west side now. And we heard the discussion earlier about the district. It's hard to say where it's going to go, but if they're putting that much into it, you know it's going to have a lot of traffic getting to it. And our concern is, as people are parking west of the Titletown District, I'm sure they'll be parking down to Cormier if there's events there. And you see on a Packer Sunday, walking in the street next to the cars, and this would be more on a regular basis, we think that that area having sidewalks to get the people up to Titletown is important. So that's, those four, or those three are to make them go south to north and back to south again. And then on Brookwood, there isn't anything there now, but we're looking at whatever they do with the townhouses there, that's got to have some either sidewalks or trails to get the people in front of those and get it from the west end down to the stadium. The next one, Hanson Road, we're looking on the south side of Hanson. If you notice, for those that live in that area or drive by that area, there's the apartments. And there's sidewalks on the north side of Hanson, but the apartments are on the south side and there's a lot of apartments there. So normally you see people walking in the street on Hanson Road, all the way down, across Ridge, going down towards Culvers, towards Wendy's, down to Oneida Street. And there is no sidewalk on that side of the street. High traffic area, a lot of people that live in those apartments, probably that's their transportation is a walking means. So we've got that as our recommendation of going from, on Hanson Road from the apartments down to Oneida. Then we have Hanson Road on the north side from Oneida to Holmgren. We've got a post office there. And there, there's, there's a short sidewalk just starting off of Oneida. And we were told that once Oneida was redone, they would relook at that and see what we can do. We've got a nice sidewalk all the way on, on Holmgren, but there's no way to connect Oneida to Holmgren. And so we're, we're having, one of our priorities is to take that sidewalk on the north side of Hanson, right on the corner there, and bring it down to Holmgren. And then you'll be able to get to the post office and whatever else is in that strip mall, but the post office is right there. We have Cormier Road. There's some sections from San Luis Place all the way down to Ashland. You got a sidewalk, then you don't have a sidewalk for a while, then you got a sidewalk, you don't have one for a while. And so it's in our priority to complete that section because there's, that's a high traffic area also, especially now with the, you know, the malls. And if we do develop the property just south of us here, that was in your plans, people are going to be using that also to get to the mall. Oneida Street from Wabi, or excuse me, Oneida Street, Wabi, from Allied up to Ridge Road. As you drive underneath 41, we've completed, as they put in the underpass under 41 there on Wabi and Oneida, the sidewalks are in and you're walking and then they stop right on the, where the state line came, where they finished putting their work in. And so it stops. And so we're looking to bring it all the way up to, to Ridge Road. So right now, when people are walking, they're in that street and Wabi's a pretty busy two-lane road. And so by having that sidewalk, they're able to get up into, all the way up to Ridge Road. So we hope that one can be moved along fairly rapidly. Then we have Ridge Road. So if you, if you kind of look on the map, it's kind of a loop from Oneida Street has sidewalks. It's underneath the overpass. We're going up to Ridge Road. We just talked earlier about putting it on Hanson on the south side. So our other recommendation is on the east side of Ridge Road between Wabi and Hanson. It's all, it's a childcare center, it's a bank, it's a school board office, it's Snyder has their offices there. There's no residential on the east side. And a lot of people, for those that drive Wabi, a lot of people walk, excuse me, drive Ridge there, a lot of people walk on Ridge there. And it's not a flat road. It's got some hills down and back up again. And so we're looking at recommending a sidewalk on that east side. So then a person can actually do a complete loop down Oneida, up Wabi, down Ridge, back down Hanson, round Oneida. So it's, it's a good, safe way to get people over to Oneida Street, but it's also an opportunity. There's a lot of hotels in the area. People go out and ask, where can they go for a safe run? They'll have a loop which they can then use that kind of goes around that circle. And the final one is under, is Cormier Road, right underneath the overpass. We've got a section, it's less than three hundred feet. We've got Pilgrim Way, and then there's, they've got sidewalks underneath the highway, and then people are walking, there's, there isn't access on North Road, but a lot of people walk North Road because it's a way to get over to Batcock. There's about three hundred feet there that, if we could complete that, people would then not have to walk out in the street on Cormier if they're on the south side trying to get underneath the highway. So those are our priorities. I know that we're not here to ask for approval to do any, but we know as you work your budgets, as plans come up, as TIF districts are developed, as roads are redone, we hope you keep these at the top of the list because if we can move forward with these, they'll make quite a few additions to the, to the community, to the access for alternate transportation. It's kind of interesting, and I'll close, open for questions. Recently, I was reading an article about a city about twenty-five miles south of here, and they were trying to promote their city to large corporations. And one big section of the article talked about the, how friendly a community is to bicyclists and pedestrians, and they didn't rank very high in the list. They said, in fact, the state of Wisconsin, there's one that really is considered acceptable. And so it's more than for leisure. It's actually what people are looking at now when they're deciding where to put their businesses. It's amazing how, I've been on the committee fourteen years, and to see the change in demand from all sources for use of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations is really growing. So any questions you have on what the committee has put together for you?
Randy, one little comment.
Yeah, here.
What you're talking about. It's funny, I've had two calls this week on the south side of Cormier, on people saying, "You people are putting sidewalks in, or attempting to, what about the south side of Cormier?"
Good.
So I hope he's watching tonight.
Good.
To know you're working on it.
Good. Thank you for sharing that.
I don't have a question to you, Randy, but Doug, I noticed some roads where we put on new blacktop, and then we put the white stripe on the edges, but there's a distance, it can't be more than two feet, and it's just tough to ride a bike. Is there, is there some standard that we can't, that we can't go maybe like three feet instead of, what's there, or three and a half feet?
The white lines that you're talking about on some of the roads typically are put around, I want to say, three to four feet. They're visually narrowed roadways. That's been a topic of discussion for, I think, possibly decades here at the village in terms of those being wider roads. They make them the width of the travel lane, and then basically give the rest of the lane to parking, walking, biking, there isn't any designated use in that side lane. It's basically just to give one lane of travel in each direction because the roads are wider.
It just seems that when we redo, I don't know if Pilgrim, I don't remember if Pilgrim is that way, I can't remember specific roads, Mary, man, maybe you don't. A road like Pilgrim Way, that ought to have enough between the white stripe and where the gravel shoulder starts, there ought to be enough room on there to ride a bike without having to worry about cars, and two feet just isn't enough space.
Yeah.
At least not for an old guy like me.
Most of them you'll see out there are about four feet or more.
Really?
Yeah.
Don't laugh, I can see what four feet is. Oh, okay, all right, maybe I'll have to take a look, Randy.
Question for you, Doug, I mean, have you, you've probably seen this list and everything, have you, for your budget, put any of these projects in there?
Actually, the top ten list is down to the top nine list, that section on Cormier Road underneath forty-one. With the work we have going on this year, our projects going, going, we had a couple of cost savings on some of the concretes, we were able to put in that small section. You'll see the drums are already out there, that'll be going in yet this fall. But the rest of the projects, yes, we have seen them, a few of them are put in as future TIF projects. Some of them, like the ones listed in the Titletown District, we have to see just what comes through on the, on the district plans coming up in Phase Two and Phase Three. The one on Cormier Road from San Luis to Ashland, from Oneida to Ashland, that Cormier Road's getting reconstructed in 2019, next year's the utilities, 2019 is the road reconstruction, there's a sidewalk going on both sides of the road as part of that construction project, so that one's already being taken care of. The stretch on the south side between San Luis and Oneida Street won't happen until that redevelops. There is no right-of-way there for sidewalk. That's all been used up, there's a right turn lane there as you're heading down the hill and turning. So what was discussed was as, on that parcel, if you will, as that redevelops, that, as part of that development, the sidewalk would be put in as part of their parking plan or something of that nature, it would be an item that would be discussed at the time of development. The ones on Hanson Road, I believe a couple of those are in future TIF projects. Morris Avenue will be getting reconstructed in the coming years as the developments take off on that block, and with that, there'd be reconstruction to be similar to what Potts Avenue is between Oneida and Holmgren, where there'll be, there's sidewalk on one side, so the village would decide at that time if you want it on one side or both sides. So a number of these projects are in queue out there in the future years, it's just getting to them.
The ones in the Titletown District, Ori Ridge, Marley, is that Safe Routes to Schools, I mean, is that gonna be impacted at all, I mean, by prioritizing them? I don't know if they are or not.
These, at this point in time, none of these would be associated with getting funding through Safe Routes to School. By all means, they could. I think there's, on those projects, I think there's probably going to be need, be a need for some type of public outreach and discussion because that's going through neighborhoods and through people's front yards, and requirements of maintenance and snow clearing, and lots of topics of discussion that I don't think have been broached yet.
Sure.
They're great ideas, but those will be things that want to be discussed in the coming months and years before pencils put the paper on it.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I have to, I just have to say that I was at a seminar back in August, and they had, it was about the millennials, the section that I was, I was sitting in, and they talked about how important sidewalks, trails, biking, all that is to millennials, and it does attract them to your area. It's very important to them, so. And I remember sitting here, how many years ago, when people used to say, "People are not going to bike and walk."
No.
Yeah, I remember that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work, you guys, Doug.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, I'll pass that on the committee. Thank you.
Okay.
Keep on biking.
Ten I, Action on Ordinance Number Eight Dash Three Dash Seventeen, An Ordinance Creating Section Seven Dash Seven Dash Two Three Nine, and Amending Section Seven Dash Two Dash Twenty-eight of Chapter Seven Traffic and Vehicles, Article Seven Bicycle, Motorbike, and Similar Vehicles, Village of Ashwabanen Municipal Code Relating to the Use of Motorized Bicycles, Electric Personal Assistive Devices, All-Terrain Vehicles, and Other Vehicles. Chief.
What you have before you tonight is an ordinance that regulates or prohibits motorized bicycles, mopeds, and so forth on Section A, addresses our sidewalks and recreational trails, and Section B addresses the roadways within the village. We've, the village has received complaints in the past with motorized bicycles, or sometimes also referred to as toys, using our sidewalks and roadways and whatnot, but this ordinance here may give us an enforcement tool in enforcing, to ensure that the use of the, of these things are prohibited, and that people can use the sidewalks and roadways without getting run over by these toys or motorized vehicles.
Move to approve ordinance number zero eight dash zero three dash seventeen.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number zero eight dash three dash seventeen. All those in favor?
Mary, well, excuse me, one second. Does this include segways and those one-wheeled carts and those little toys that they, you know, that the kids have now with just the, you know, their small tires like this, is that all that included in this?
Yes, it's toys, you know, motorized toys on the roadway, and that's why Section C says parents and guardians are responsible, because obviously, we're not gonna arrest an eight-year-old, but we hold them responsible, though.
I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't know how we relay this message out to the public, I mean, to make sure that, because I mean, during Packer games, I see them up and down their roads over there all the time, so I just want to make sure that the word gets out somehow.
Yep.
There was a guy going down Oneida Street on Sunday on a motorized little skateboard thing with a handle on it. That will be illegal.
Yes.
Okay.
If you can catch him.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten J, Garage Equipment Purchase. Greg.
Yeah, during the budget process that we're going through right now, Doug Martin brought forward a couple requests for replacement of equipment that we currently have, one being the vehicle parts washer for fourteen thousand, and a drill press for three thousand dollars to help with the budget, and since we have some excess funds available this year, being under budget in a lot of different areas, and since it's equipment we already own, and it's very valuable equipment, in other words, the cost to not have this is far greater by contracting different services. We just wanted to go ahead and make those purchases today and absorb it in the existing budget, and like I said, we already have, we have enough funds to cover. In many regards, this is just wear and tear of equipment and just replacing it, so, but because of the higher-cost item, it was brought forward.
In going through the budget process, when this, when this item came up, I have to say that everybody that sits around that table has complimented our guys in the garage in how well they do, so this is a piece of equipment that they really need to...
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the garage equipment purchases. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten K, Action on Resolution R. Ten Dash Two Dash Seventeen, Amending Village Bond Schedule. Tony.
Okay, this is an agenda item to simply add in the violations of our new short-term rental licensing. So basically, what it does is set a bond amount so we can issue citations with, with that correct bond amount that is consistent with the increase that we did back, I believe, in June of this year. So basically, what it does is, it keeps that same bond amount in Chapter Seventeen for any zoning code violations, as well as now adds it in for any violations of Chapter Six, Article Thirteen, and also recommend keeping the, the bond amount consistent with what it was previously increased to, which is two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then in addition to that, just a couple of other quick cleanup items on the bond schedule, after discussion with Public Safety, to correct the legal citation, and one of the items with respect to possession, possessing a weapon while intoxicated, and then deleting the switchblade requirement due to the state's repeal of that law.
Move to approve the Resolution Ten, or R. Ten Dash Two Dash Seventeen, Amending the Village Bond Schedule.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R. Ten Dash Two Dash Seventeen. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. L., Request to Forgive the December Health Insurance Premium. Allison.
We've done this a few times in the past. In order to more consistently budget for our health insurance, we try to maintain the several, same level of costs, even though we may have a projection that is saying that it was trending downwards. And in this particular case, we did have a significant increase last year due to reinsurance and high-cost claims, but we are trending the opposite now this year. Our traditional plan is running now, as of September, claims about eighty-three percent of what is budgeted, and our high-deductible plan is running about forty-eight and a half percent of budget. So as a result of that, what we like to do is for the traditional plan, active employees, we would like to forgive their employee contribution, and at the same time, the village would not be making its portion of the contribution into the health fund, so those funds could be used for other purposes. In addition, because the high-deductible plan, those employees do not pay an employee contribution for that as part of an incentive to be on the high cost, or the high-deductible plan, what we would like to do is make an employer contribution to their health savings account in an amount that the employees on the traditional plan would see as a forgiveness. So that's where you see the amounts for a single would be a hundred and four sixty-four, the employee plus one would be a hundred and sixty dollars, ten cents, and then the family would be two thirteen thirty-two. So the total overall savings would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
With the J here that we just had with the equipment purchases and everything, that finance and personnel, I mean, I know that, we talked about this, and I think that's a good move for us to save that money, but are you gonna be coming forward with other recommendations before the end of the year for like this hundred and forty thousand plus any other excess funds that we have left over from the budget before the end of the year, or after budget process?
We will, we'll have a discussion again about that during budget, and then a little bit in our closed session, actually, today, we'll, we'll talk about more particularly the excess funds from this year and try and do earmark it for our grievance purposes.
Okay.
Move to approve the request contained in Item Ten, is it I or L?
L.
L., Forgiving the December Health Insurance Premium as laid out in the green sheet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a...
Can you also clarify that that is also include the employer contribution, not just the premium forgiveness? There's two things there, I just want to make sure it's clear in the minutes, in case I missed that.
Isn't that what you said?
I don't know. I was just clarifying, is that what you said?
I got it.
Before, it's too late.
That's my motion, yeah, okay.
Kate, we have a motion and a second to approve the Item Ten L. as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Ten M. is my item. I have a committee appointment for Patty Lower to Police and Fire Commission, so...
Who's she taking?
Huh?
Who's she, who's she taking?
She is taking Corky Byro's place. He moved to Hobart, so...
What's her name, Mary?
Her, her name is Patty Lower.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the committee appointment as presented. Second.
I'll second, excuse me, I'll certainly vote yes, but I just, in the, in the, we don't get this very often, but in the past, as I recall, we had a sheet, I don't know this lady from Adam, so I'm sure you were recommending her, that's good enough for me, but I just, if there's a sheet that shows...
She did, she did fill out an application, but it was not included in here.
Okay, I don't, and I don't need it for tonight, but I'm just thinking in the future, they're nice to see.
I gotta ask another question, too, right before I made the motion, but Corky's been on the board, or been on this board, he's been on the committees forever, and he moved to Hobart. We have another person on the, on the village, on the Police and Fire Commission, we have another person on Site Plan Review, at least one that aren't members of the village, or don't live in the village, but they still are on committees. So did he relinquish this, or what are we doing, I mean, are we changing policy here, or how, what are we gonna do here?
No. That was actually, Mark, that was a decision I made. We, Corky called me and told me he was gonna be moving. I thought that there were eight people on Police and Fire Commission, there are only five. I feel that we should have residents of the village sitting on Police and Fire Commission, especially since there are only five.
Yeah, but we don't, there's still...
There is one more, and his term is coming up, and, and it was decided before I was here that he was able to stay on there, so when his term is up, then we'll see what happens then, but I'm just saying.
What other committees, are we keeping the residency requirement, or are we gonna...
The other committees have more people. This committee only has five people, so I could not have two people out of five that are out of Ashwabanen. That was my decision.
One of the reasons for the person on Site Plan, which happened sometime back, yes, he did move out of the area, or out of Ashwabanen, I should say, but he does have businesses in Ashwabanen.
Well, they all do, I mean, they all have lived in Ashwabanen before and, and everything, too, so I mean, I'm just, I want to make sure that we...
Well, that was the reason for him.
Right.
That's what President said at that time.
This, this committee, with it being so small, of only five people, like I said, I did not want two people do not live in the area, so that is why I made that decision. So, Kate, we have a motion and a second... So, Kate, we have a motion and a second to recommend Patty Lower to the Police and Fire Commission, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10M, action, oh, I already did that, sorry, 10N, the Halloween trick-or-treat hours, Eric Dunning.
Trick-or-treat hours for the villagers of Ashwabanen would be on Halloween, it'd be, hours would be four to seven, to be consistent with the other municipalities that neighbor us.
Thank you. Number 11, meeting reminder, joint finance and personnel, village board meeting Tuesday, November 7, 2017, at 5:30. Don't forget, and also, we have Pancakes and Politics this Friday morning.
And that can't be there.
At the community center, okay, thank you.
Pancakes and politics.
Pancakes and politics, and I decided that we should have all trustees available, you know, if they can't, they can't, that's one thing, but-
What time is it, 9? Oh, no, 7, 7 o'clock.
No.
Holy man.
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock.
Oh, 9, oh, you moved it to 9?
It is 9.
It is 9. It's always been 9.
I have 7 circled on my calendar for some reason.
And then also, do you wanna, we also-
How's it set up, though?
7 o'clock for setup.
Take it out.
I think we also had discussed internally of moving the December 26 meeting to December 20, or December 19th, excuse me.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Ken could be available perhaps.
Move-
Yes.
If you can schedule accordingly.
Move the 26th to 19th, is it? Which one?
Yeah, we'll do that the third, the third week for December.
And what are we doing for, what are we doing Thanksgiving week then? I know we have the meeting next, next, no, the 7th, right?
20, yeah.
What other meetings do we have, are we, are we gonna have a meeting on the 21st?
28.
Uh, the third one.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 28th.
Finance and Personnel and Park Board is the third one, correct?
28 will be our regular meeting, and that will be the actual final budget adoption, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I may be here.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I'll move to go to closed-
Items for next agenda?
Items for next agenda, I have none, if we have any, call staff. 13, convening in closed session.
Move to go to closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session, roll call please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Malcheski.
Yes.
President Kardaski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.